Good evening. Meeting number thirty-three is now called to order. This is May sixth, two thousand nineteen, five-thirty PM, and we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice echo, John.
John, you're a little off-key there, buddy.
I know, he cut out. I'm gonna make this simple and quick, I'll get this, I'll get off as soon as I can.
Okay, sounds good. Kathleen, let's do roll call.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here, standing in the water.
Graham Murray.
Here.
McCampbell.
Here. Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have certificates for Medal of Merit, and I'll turn it over to our chief, Chief Cracker.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, Council. All officers of the Burlington Police Department have an opportunity to have a positive impact on a person's life on a daily basis. Sometimes they're able to be at the right place, at the right time, and make the biggest impact by saving a person's life. The Medal of Merit is the department's second highest award and is given to officers who distinguish themselves by bravery, or heroism, or by exceptional behavior during an extraordinary hazardous situation, and resolve the issue without injury to any person. On March twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, at approximately eight-nineteen PM, officers were dispatched to a suicidal subject on the Great River Bridge. Officer Jake Jenkins and Officer Josh Riffel arrived on the scene, located a man standing outside the railing on the ledge of the bridge. While Officer Riffel was talking to the subject, Officer Jenkins approached from behind and was able to grab the man by the hood of his sweatshirt to prevent him from jumping. Officer Riffel then grabbed onto the subject, who stated his intention was to slide out of his sweatshirt and fall into the river below. Officer Jenkins and Riffel continued to struggle with the subject until other officers arrived and were able to pull the man to safety. The subject was then taken to Great River Medical Center to be evaluated. Correspondence from the family states that therapy and treatment has drastically improved their loved one's mental health. They also extend their gratitude to all officers involved in saving the life of their family member. Officers don't brag about actions they take to save a person's life, believing that is just part of their duty as a police officer. When searching for police officer applicants, we seek out individuals who are caring, compassionate towards their fellow community members with a willingness to put themselves at risk to save another person's life. It is with a great amount of pride that I present Officer Jacob Jenkins and Officer Joshua Riffel with the Burlington Police Department Medal of Merit for their lifesaving actions on March twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. I brought them here today to recognize them in front of you as the council for the city of Burlington.
Please help. I just wanted to document, I saw Officer Riffel the other day, waved to me, didn't wave back. Thank you, we sure appreciate you, and the family does. You clearly didn't wave to him. Yeah, we appreciate you too. Can we get a picture with you guys? Just like you said. Quickly throw something up when people make mistakes, but we want to try to throw it up when they do good stuff, too. And gentlemen, while we got to here, would you have a word?
So, basically, all I can say for Officer Riffel and I, we're grateful to receive this award on a night where we're just out doing our job. That's about all I can say.
And that's plenty. Thank you.
I just want to thank the council for having us here and our command staff, for all the support we get. It's been truly a blessing for me to come back home and serve the community. So, thank you.
Okay, for those of you that came down for this, you guys can dip on out of here if you want. Okay, next tonight, we have a Mayor's Award, and I always look forward to this part of the evening when we can recognize somebody in the community. This guy that I'm recognizing tonight, I've known him ever since he was a young cat, he's not a young cat anymore, he's grown up and handling business, and there was an issue that took place that he was concerned about, and he reached out to, reached out to me and said he wanted to do something about it. And when there's problems in the community, people are quick to complain and point and say, "Well, this is wrong," but you decided to take the constructive route, and you got something done. And man, I'm proud of you, for whatever it's worth, and I'm glad to be recognizing you tonight, that you're really growing into quite the young man, and when I grow up, I'm going to be just like you. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your love for children, care for the community, and your mature and constructive way of problem-solving helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On May sixth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to James Weinrich. Come on down, not Jamie, but Jay. That is for you, my friend, and so is this.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Can we get a picture, can we get a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have a word?
How you doing? I don't only want to thank Mr. McCampbell, I also want to thank the Burlington Police Department for how quick of a response we got out of this issue with the school zone, and I just wish that people would do the speed limit during the school hours. That's all I ask for. I've been pushing to not have children hit by vehicles. I know there was a circumstance, child was struck, kind of iffy situation. Possibly, I don't know if we can go down the road later, possibly getting the light moved on Sunny Side down a little further, later on, maybe different issue, keep in contact, possibly get us on with that, but I do want to thank, I did talk to Police Chief a couple times, he did resolve the issues pretty fast and prompt, I want to thank him also, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If you want to dip on out of here, you are more than welcome to dip on in. Thanks for coming down, I certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight is a very special friend of mine. I coached him in basketball, I call him the microwave because this guy can get hot, just like that. But recently, they just had, they had DARE essays, and I got, I got a chance to go to the graduation, and I heard this essay, and it just, it just rocked me. I thought, man, what a, what a mature essay, and this guy's eleven, twelve? Twelve, he's twelve, but he's a big guy. But anyways, I, I thought, man, this was so awesome, I wanted to bring him down and see if he would read this for us, so that everybody that's tuning in could get a chance to hear from this young man. So, at this time, I would like to call down Tomas. I've been working on that. Raskin. Pull that down a little, pull that down a little, there you go.
Good evening, my name's Tomas Raskin, and I'm in sixth grade and go to Great River Christian School. I learned a lot in DARE class this year. Did you know that there are seventy-five thousand alcohol-related deaths each year in the US? Chief Logan helped me a lot, lot this year for my teenage and adult life. This year's DARE class was awesome. The really fun part this year in DARE class was asking questions about what things happened, and if Chief Logan has caught kids doing drugs or stuff like that. This year, I learned what cigarettes and drugs can do to your body, it is terrible. I also learned a lot of definitions, too. I also learned that nicotine is a harmful chemical in cigarettes. Did you know that more than four hundred thousand Americans die from tobacco-related causes each year? There are also fifty thousand deaths per year that can be attributed to the secondhand smoke. We also were taught about what we should do when friends ask us something not to do. One thing that we really need to do when we are being peer pressured is calm down and think, is this the right thing to do? Another thing that I learned is communication, which is expressing your feelings to somebody. I also learned the five W's: who, what, when, where, and why. Every day before and after DARE class, we watched characters in a video. At the beginning, we watched what happened, and at the end, we learned how they solved what happened. I have used DARE in my life because after every lesson, I think about what happened, and I change what I used to do every, every week. There were a couple times in my life where I could have stood up for myself and friends, but I didn't. If my friends are on drugs, I will know what to do from the DARE decision-making model. In the future, I will use the DARE decision-making model by not doing drugs or smoking and doing the right thing and not the wrong thing. I will use DARE in my future by the definitions that I learned this year. In my future, if I see my friends or I'm getting bullied, or getting punched, or called names, I will stand up for myself. I see my friends doing the wrong thing, I will help them out and tell them the right thing to do. I learned so much in DARE this year by Chief Logan. I learned a lot about alcohol, drugs, and cigarettes. I also learned a lot of definitions. I am so glad that I had Chief Logan as an officer and teacher. If I was to be a police officer when I grew up, I would want to be as cool as Chief Logan. Thank you, Chief Logan, for all that you taught me.
Microwave, what can I say, man, you're a wonder, my friend, in so many different ways. When I was younger, if I'd have been as mature as you are, I'd be somebody today. Jesus hadn't come and saved you, but let me tell you something, really proud of you. I look up to you and admire you, you really inspired me with your DARE essay, and man, I tell you what, I just want to encourage you to keep on, keep on, keep doing what you're doing. I'm looking forward to seeing how things are going to turn out for you. Definitely see bigger things for you than me. Can I get a picture taken with this, with this? You guys can get on out of here, but thank you for bringing him down, that was awesome. All right. Now we've got three proclamations.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a proclamation. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendered, rendering equal services to all, the municipal clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, and now for, be it resolved, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, two thousand nineteen, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extends appreciation to our municipal clerk, Kathleen P. Salisbury, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary, exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed and sealed this sixth day of May, two thousand nineteen, Shane A. McCampbell, Mayor.
Kathleen, would you please have a word? She's the best.
Katie Music, Deputy City Clerk, and I wanted to thank the Mayor and the Council for proclaiming the week of May fifth as Municipal Clerk's Week. Thank you.
She's the best.
I have a proclamation, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for maintaining growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, enhancing districts and communities, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Historic preservation is relevant for all communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contribution made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Burlington has an abundance of historic treasures, including national and local registered properties, and the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission promotes the preservation of historic landmarks and historic districts within the city of Burlington. And whereas this place matters is the theme for National Historic Preservation Month, two thousand nineteen, co-sponsored by the City of Burlington Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, we, the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May twenty-nineteenth as National Historic Preservation Month, and the City of Burlington calls upon all the people of Burlington to join their fellow citizens, rather, across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Signed and sealed this sixth day of May, two thousand nineteen, the Honorable Shane A. McCampbell. And this goes out to Mr. Preservation himself, Steve Freibert.
He's the best.
Just very briefly, it's my pleasure to serve as Chair for the City's Historic Preservation Commission. I truly value all the guidance and, and help we get from Eric as our, our staff liaison. Look forward to bringing someone new on, on, on board soon. And really, this proclamation is dedicated to all the individuals and business owners and churches and organizations, and of course, the city of Burlington, who all work to preserve the architectural legacy that we have here in the city. In recognition of that, on Wednesday, May fifteenth, at six-thirty in the evening, the Preservation Commission is hosting a free, sort of, get-to-know-your-design-guidelines orientation session at the Public Library, there in the meeting room. So, this past year, with the Certified Local Government Grant, we completed design guidelines for the Heron Shale Historic District. So, those were approved by this council, and we are going to be talking a little bit about that, but I'll also be giving a presentation about the history of architectural residential styles in Burlington. So, I invite everybody to come out for that, and as I remind everybody that at this time this year, it's not old because it's good, it's good because it's old. No, the other way around. You know what I mean.
That was good, man.
That's good. You steamed.
All right. Our next, uh?
Yes.
Proclamation?
Your Honor, I have a proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Burlington, Iowa, with the theme EMS Strong Beyond the Call. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed, sealed, this sixth day of May, two thousand nineteen, Shane A. McCampbell.
Brandon Howard. He's the best.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, I appreciate and to receive this proclamation of EMS Week on behalf of Chief, Chief Trexwell, and all of my esteemed colleagues down at the Burlington Fire Department. This is great that we're able to promote EMS in this capacity, hopefully getting the word out to prompt some discussion amongst public members before they have to call 911 and learn what services we have to do. Part of what we offer as far as going beyond the call, one major way that we do that at the Burlington Fire Department is we recognize that we are just a small part in a patient's care, and so we, we have a strong partnership with Great River Medical Center, and we meet with them regularly and talk with them regularly about trauma and other issues, but this is the most evident in our care for cardiac patients. I just want to share with you briefly, the American Heart Association and the American College of Cardiology has established a hundred and twenty minutes as an acceptable guideline for heart attack care. The one hundred and twenty minutes is measured from first medical contact, so in our case, that's when our medics make contact with people having chest pain or cardiac issues in the field. And that goes till intervention by the cardiac cath lab team at Great River. Consistently, because of our teamwork and training, our patients receive care well within that margin, and our last heart attack patient that met this criteria took only seventy-two minutes from first contact with our crews to post-intervention in the cath lab at G R M C. And this is a pretty consistent and regular occurrence with our, with our cardiac team. We're really proud and happy to be a part of that chain of survival, so, thanks for recognizing this, and have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One, consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have eight resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatement for various properties. The second is a resolution to establish new rental fees and charge schedules for Memorial Auditorium, the Port of Burlington, and the Depot Riverfront Properties effective July first. The third is a resolution approving removal of four no parking from eight AM to ten AM, Monday through Friday, signs on the seven-hundred and eight-hundred block of Randall Lane. Fourth is a resolution approving Iowa contaminated site environmental covenant for property located at eleven-oh-six Washington Street, the former Dresser-Rand site. Five is a resolution naming the street located in the sixteenth addition to Flint Ridge Business Park subdivision. Six is a resolution approving a yard waste program for the collection and disposal of leaves. Seven is a resolution approving a second partial release of retention monies for the Phase Five flood wall. And then, eight is a resolution approving final payment for the front and valley storm sewer repair. We also have a public hearing set for May twentieth, is consideration of an ordinance rezoning a portion of property locally known as seven-oh-five Maple Street from C-two General Commercial to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District. And then we also have some appointments, May Proton?
Yes, we have two appointments for the Renewable Energy Committee. We have Dan Wischmeyer and Sally Parrott. We thank you both for your service on those committees.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? No, Leon. I've got dinner reservations, I'm just going to go.
Leon Chahin, eighteen-twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street, I'd like to have a discussion on, under resolutions, item number four and item number six.
You've got it. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Can we get a motion?
Your Honor, I have the motion to approve all listed items under Item One, consent agenda, with the exception of items number four and number six.
You got a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCampbell.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna, just since I have Counselor on, he wanted to make sure that he was available for one vote, so we're gonna bump that up here real quick. So, we're going to move to Resolution Number Four. Okay, Mr. Rinker.
Yep. Let me get there.
You go.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the twenty-eight E agreement concerning public safety emergency communications in Des Moines County, Iowa.
Second.
Anything, who's, James?
This would be a, we, we are just completing our first five-year agreement with, with DESCOM. Renewal agreement for an additional five years would add the distinction of putting in the city of Middletown, along with ourselves, Des Moines County, City of West Burlington, City of Danville, and the city of Minneapolis. Main changes that, that are on here, changes in the voting members, would add an additional voting member for the city of Burlington, provide representation to the rural incorporated cities, that they can rotate between them, Minneapolis, Danville, and Middletown. And the funding formula has been altered a little bit. Going down and looking at the funding formula for the, the new, new timeframe, would, would transition at, it'd be the first, the same formula that we currently have for the first year, and then would transition to, in Section Seven, it shows the cost sharing, changing that distribution form percentage slightly. Our percentage is the same, it just transfers how the remaining entities are paying, and some of the smaller communities, how they were paying their percentage is a little bit different than it was before. The item of concern that's been brought up during the discussions on this has to do with, has been the funding formula, that at least my understanding of what any item of concern is, when we talked about the funding formula on this, there have, if you go across the state, how many different entities are there? Chief, do you know?
Hundred and fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen. You would probably find a hundred different ways of distributing costs, there's no magical formula for making it happen. There are multitude of counties where you'll find that distribution on the cost is comparable to to here. In Burlington, for example, we paid, Burlington, I'm sorry, I am in Burlington, previous town I was in, in Sergeant Bluff, as an example, we paid our pro-rata share based on calls of service, and we also got to pay a portion of the county's fee, very similar to what happens here. That is something that happens in a multitude of places across the state. I was asked a question about this earlier by Linda, and one of the things I mentioned, and this is the argument that was made when I was in Woodbury County, when we complained about having to pay our levy and also have to pay the county's portion, or a portion of the county's, one of the comments they had is not only do, does the dispatch center provide service for our city's police department and city's fire department, but it also provides service to the sheriff's department, which provides coverage within our community. You can make that same argument here as a justification for why you see a level of charge on both sides. So from that perspective, there's a very solid reason why you see places have a distribution similar to what we have here. We didn't feel it was fair when we were in Sergeant Bluff. We got to live with it there. I think there are some that would say that there's a level of concern about how it's done here. My recommendation throughout this process of renewal was to see us move to where we had one unified levy across the county that is based on a valuation perspective. It means that everyone's treated objectively, and it does away with the concern about trying to figure out what's the fair way to do it. It's one that just evenly distributes, similar to any other property tax. That wasn't what was, wasn't agreeable to all entities. I think several of the entities would be satisfied with doing it. The county notably was not in favor of seeing that happen. But it kind of leaves it to the floor for you all to, for how to move forward. Linda asked what my recommendation was. Well, it's kind of tough. I'd prefer to see a funding formula in a different format than what's in this contract. However, looking at it from a level of service, whether we're paying through it through the city's levy, or it's all in one countywide levy, it, the bigger concern is that we're having the coordinated services that's being done on a countywide basis. And we're gonna pay pretty close to the same amount one way or another as a community. The, you do have the option of deciding not to renew this. However, if you do that, the existing 28E does not have an, it's a hard date for closure. It doesn't have an auto-renew function within it. Some, you'll see that it's, it would, they, some 28Es renew automatically. This one does not. So somehow you have to then transition, how do we move forward? We can't, we can't be in a situation where we don't have an agreement in place, and we have very little time. One of the things that was suggested was, is that if you did determine not to approve this agreement, that you could try to get maybe a one-year agreement in place to get us through for discussions. And you would, if you're trying to force a change to the countywide levy, that can't be done this next year regardless. We've already, everyone's set budgets that are based off of a property tax distribution and a funding formula that's written or contemplated in this renewal, renewed agreement. Going to unified, there's no way to change and adopt a new levy that would account for that and make that possible this next year. I don't have a great level of recommendation for you. I feel comfortable moving forward with it as written, but I understand there's some level of concern on the council.
Are there any questions and concerns, anybody from the audience? Counsel?
So I guess, I'm just not a fan of moving forward with a five-year agreement, where I know that there's more discussion that needs to be had in order to hash out the funding formula. I understand your concern with not being able to put an agreement in place. The potential exists for us to extend the existing agreement by voting for it, correct? We can extend the date. And I asked her, I asked her last week if it would continue.
If you can get the other entities to get, to buy off on that, too.
And at the end of the day, like I said, I don't think, I don't think it's finished. So I can't support it at this point.
Anybody else have any comments before we vote? Let's get down to business. Kathleen?
Rinker?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
No.
Graham Murray?
No.
McCambo?
I'm rolling with the nose. Shoot it down. Okay. Uh, counselor, you getting out of here?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dip out. Thank you, everybody. I know it's always, always tough to do a call-in, but this, this one was important to me. So I appreciate you enduring the phone call and the echo. So have a great meeting with less of it, and Godspeed to all of you.
Okay.
We appreciate you, John. Thanks.
Stay dry. Okay, now we'll start back to where we were. We've got a hearing. This is a consideration of 2018-2019 budget amendment number one. Stephanie?
Okay, in your packet, what is the state form that was published with the amended numbers? I can just briefly go through the amounts that we are adjusting. On the revenue side, basically, the large sum is the bond proceeds that we're gonna get on May 15th for the sewer refunding. We didn't have that budgeted, that was almost $7 million. And then also the bond proceeds on 2019, $200,000 for that, and then transfers for about $900,000. And those are just different transfers that have occurred through the year that we just need to adjust. On the expenditure side, you can see, based on the function, on public safety, we're upping fire and police under the public safety. There's some things, again, we talked about during the FY '20 budget, kind of the same things we're experiencing in '19, we're seeing, you know, we have the third ambulance location, we're buying some more turnout gear for fire. On the police side, we've seen a little increase in overtime than what was budgeted. Building expenses, we had to purchase a new generator and siren for the Dane County, or Dane Tower. On public works, we had an increase in what we had budgeted for snow removal and overtime, which after the winter, we had as expected. And then there's just some small amounts in community and development and general government, things that have come up through the year that we just want to adjust. So, and then on the business type, again, the large amount, the $6.6 million are the bond proceeds, the CART program, five, almost $500,000 for that, and then the transfers even out. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Okay, I didn't see any. Thank you for the good work, Steph. Can I get a motion, please?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the 2018-2019 budget amendment number one.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's vote.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Ordinance number one?
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 34 Human Rights Commission of the Burlington Municipal Code.
You got a second?
Second.
Second? Thank you.
We didn't get a final on this, right?
No, you can, they would amend it if they're willing to. And you have four votes, so they can do that.
We talked about that last week, so I think...
Yeah, I thought, I just thought the wording would be different. Anyway, this is the Human Rights Commission ordinance. Basically, what I did is just updating the language to what the actual commission does. We are formed to educate the public about the Iowa Civil Rights Law. If I do get any calls of discrimination, everything is referred up to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission. They handle all the complaints. So this commission is there just to educate and promote. So the language I am taking out is where it talks about that we do actual complaints and investigations, because we don't, we do refer them all to the state office. And also, there's a, we have seven members of this commission, and it did require five members for a quorum, and I would like to change that to four members, which is the majority, and which most of our other ones are four, so...
Sounds good. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel, we good?
Yep.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 34 Human Rights Commission of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 34 Human Rights Commission of Burlington, of the Burlington Municipal Code.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Now let's vote as amended.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number one.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement and providing for issuance and securing the payment of a sewer revenue refunding bond, Series 2019B, in the principal amount of $5,840,840.
Second?
It's amazing amount of steps you have to take to refinance some debt.
It's an amazing amount, Jim?
An amazing amount.
What does that have to do?
Phenomenal. It means like a lot of steps. So this would follow up with the refinancing of two sewer, state revolving fund, not SRF, just sewer revenue bonds, that it, the series numbers were the 2010 and 2011. We'd gone out to get quotes for what, what we could, where we, how we could place those and potentially have some savings. Zion's Bank Corp. out of Salt Lake City, Utah, had come in as the preferred savings. They have estimated savings for pure interest savings, about $493,000 over the life of the loans. Repayment schedule would remain the same on the principal payments. The reason it was recommended to go with this one, even though there was some options that had a little bit more pure savings, this one has a feature that allows it to be called at any time. So as we move forward with the, over the life of the repayment schedule through 2031, at any point, we could choose to call these bonds. The others had different call dates that were within them, so there was a little bit of a trade-off there. Regardless, we're saving approximately $500,000 through this refinancing. The majority of the language you'll see in here talks about the sewer revenue debt that we have in here, discussing where they fit within equal par with each other. It puts this new placement on equal par with the remaining debt issuances that we have on the books for, that are revenue bonds. Again, these are sewer revenue bonds, they're not backed by the full faith and credit of the city, the general obligation side. These are backed by the revenue generated within the sewer fund. We have already gone through all the other steps necessary to refinance the existing debt that shows the new payment will be made through, clearing through UMB Bank, which will also be kind of addressed with our other debt that on the next resolution. But would recommend moving forward with getting this placed, so we can pay off the bonds and save about $500,000 in interest.
Right. Anybody in the audience have a problem with us saving 500G?
Well, I never...
Since these, excuse me, Leon Chahin, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, since these are revenue bonds, does it affect our sewer rates one way or another, or how does that work?
It won't have an impact. These, we were already financing these with sewer revenue within our rate structure. The bond schedule will be the same as it was previously. The interest that will, interest payments will be a little lower, so it gives us a little bit more flexibility over time. And it saves us a little money, but not enough to proactively see...
So there won't be a change either way on the sewer rate?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel? Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Yes, please.
Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution consenting to assignment of trustee agent agreements, escrow agent agreements, and for paying agent and registrar and transfer agent agreements.
I need a second.
This, as I mentioned with the last, UMB Bank is acquiring a corporate trust business of Bankers Trust. Bankers Trust is who, has been our paying agent for all of our debt service in the, previously. This will now just transfer, so as we make our fee, make our fee payments, and all of our principal and interest payments will all flow through UMB rather than through Bankers Trust. They've both mutually asked us to change them to UMB to be our new paying agent, and this allows that to get done. It'll notice, it has some language in here that we have to notify Emma. I guess Travis Squires will take care of that for us, as our dissemination agent.
Emma's Electronic Municipal Market Access. It's not chick, so... Questions from the audience?
You're pretty smart. I didn't know you knew that.
You know what? Mind your business.
It says it in big letters right there.
So, no, no. So, no questions? Counsel? Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 Locust Sewer Separation Project.
Second.
Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. The resolution in front of you would approve a contract for FI excavating for the Locust Sewer Separation Project. We've discussed this in the past, the Locust Sewer Separation Project is a combination of sanitary and storm sewer work to help us comply with our current consent order. The estimate from the engineer's H.R. Green was $5.6 million. The bids came in a little bit higher than planned. The low bid of FI excavating was $6.191 million, so we're over half million dollars over the estimate. There's a lot of things that factor into bidding. I think, after I spoke with Jesse further, I think risk is probably the biggest. The depths of the sewer, some of those are in the 20 to 30-foot range, and then some of the close proximity of the garages that we will be going down in the alleyway, so even though we are over budget, we'll be paying for this through SRF. We have to amend, we're in the process of getting the SRF funds to pay for it. We also have $600,000 in CDHB grant funds to pay for the project. I recommend approving the contract to continue us on this process to, one, meet the consent order, but two, to show, you know, we're going out to renegotiate the consent order here soon to show good faith that we're trying to improve the sewer system. There potentially are things that you could dial back from the project. Both H.R. Green and Jesse and I have discussed reducing out the lining in the sanitary sewers. However, I think that with this type of project, the more full separation than what we've done in the past, I think that that would maybe be a misstep. I think that that only leads to potential projects like over by Hy-Vee off of Angular, the, if collapses, things like that. So I would caution trying to dial back some of the lining from that project. I think if this is the type of project that we're gonna do, then we would, we should need, we'd do it the complete way.
This is the largest of the basins, isn't it?
No, it's the smallest of the remaining...
I mean, but it's the, one of the larger projects overall.
So this is different than, the Mazel, the Market Angular South Locust, is, all four of them will have cost, or have cost numbers that go with them that are significantly higher than what we had in the other basins. The area is the core area of town, which is one of the reasons that drives the cost, but the other is that... is one of the reasons that, that drives the cost, but the other is that we are doing the project in a different way than what those previous projects were done. Would you like to?
Correct. Previous sewer separation was done by only installing storm sewer, by eliminating the storm sewer from entering into the sanitary. There were some other sanitary work that was done down in like the, in the, in the tunnels or the arches. But what that type of sewer separation left behind was a lot of sanitary lines that haven't been touched for, for a long time. And so, we see a lot of infiltration and influence, or, did I say that right?
Inflow.
Inflow.
Inflow and infiltration.
Into the sanitary sewer lines, and we see a lot of SSO. That's the reason for the equalization tanks. When we first started down this pathway with HR Green, it was a way to, to, on a smaller basin, to prove that this concept would work. Unfortunately, I think that this project has grown over time, and it's also, we're also have, we have several things going on at the same time. We have the integrated planning that we're doing, that we started with EPA, and we're gonna use as kind of the basis for our renegotiation. So, I would, I don't know that we will continue with this type of process moving forward until the negotiation is done. Once the negotiation is hopefully in our favor, we will proceed in a different manner than, we'll still do separation type work, but our goal will not be driving towards just sewer separation. It'll be towards overall environmental impact of, of the storm and sanitary system. So, it won't be just this constant drive, which our current consent order is, is to meet compliance and separate the sewers. So, that's kind of the differences of what, what has happened, what this project is, and where we go in the future.
Let's, do we have any questions from the audience?
I hate it that we're that far over budget, but I talked to Nick, and you said you really bid it out to a lot of bidders. It's such a condensed area that people are reluctant to take on this project.
When we sent this out, we put it out on, we're required to by state law, to put it on some builders forum. I don't know what it's called exactly. It's not Dodge Reports, it's something else. But then we, we advertised, and then we even sent out to, you know, a dozen or more known contractors like this. And so, for us to only get two to bid on it, it must say something that they're busy, or, or that this project just doesn't, I don't know, isn't that appetizing. It's not as ea, easy as a project. It's a complicated project.
Nick had his sleeves taken in so he can look buffer than he really is. I just wanted to document. Okay, I think that's a pretty weak move anyways.
Nick, Nick, can you reject all bids and start over again?
You can. I, I, you would have to change what you're doing to rebid it, to simply rebid it because you don't like the dollar figure. You may run into some complications.
You could end up in a legal battle over that.
Correct. The, the lowest bidder on this may challenge that, and you could have some issues. Theoretically, you could reject all bids and then change something about the way that you bid this, but to plan on getting a lower bid, I don't know if that would happen.
Yeah, again, this is, it's, the dollar figure is a large dollar figure, but it's a ten percent variance, and we've seen ten percent variances on bids both higher and lower previously. I mean, it's, you just don't know what you're gonna get if you try to do that anyway.
Well, we saved an interest we spent on this project, right?
Yes, and as one, another point, Leon, this is, we, we saved five hundred thousand on the other one, and this is higher, higher than, than what we'd anticipated, and they do help to offset each other, but.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, Kathleen, let's, let's vote on it.
Rinker?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes. Okay, let's move to the consent agenda, number four.
Yes. Here I have a resolution approving Iowa contaminated site environmental covenant for property located at eleven zero six Washington Street, former Dresser Rand Site.
It's all about you.
I need a second.
No second? Thank you both.
Well, my question there is, since we're talking environmental contamination, how much more is this costing us? What, what are we dealing with?
This covenant is just to, I guess, for future use of the property. The council previously approved a covenant a few months back. It was, didn't meet quite all the standards of the DNR. There's some Iowa administrative code chapters that needed to change, but this was previously approved. This is just amending the existing covenant to reference current code standards.
Covenant doesn't, isn't requiring us to do any additional work. It does limit, or limit how the use of that, or what the future uses of that property can be. No residential is allowed. It does allow for, the way the language on this covenant is, is read, us and our successor, and any successor owners would be limited to commercial and industrial uses with no personnel on, on a constant work site.
Yeah.
So, you could use it for storage, warehouse space, but not for, say, a commercial retail outlet.
So, in other words, you're trying to protect the public here from whatever is there.
Yeah, this is, this is essentially saying that we already had the, the property. We had an existing environmental liability. We cleaned up and expended funds, and DNR is saying, as long as you're, you limit your uses to non-residential and non-daily use on a commercial basis, so storage space or something comparable to that, you are cleared from having to do any further cleanup.
All right. No further problems.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen, you might as well just stay where you're at, though. Yep, Kathleen?
Rinker?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes, please. Number six.
Here I have a resolution approving a yard waste program for the collection and disposal of leaves.
Second.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I guess my question here is, since I'm a gardener and I have quite a bit of garden waste, leaves and whatnot, what are we talking about? How's the program changing?
This would, currently, like the spring, for example, we were able to use the thirty, thirty gallon containers that you previously used, or you could use the bags that you would purchase from Lowe's, Menards, or wherever. This would limit you to using those bags that you buy from a, a third-party vendor, not using the thirty gallon containers, also not using the new city, city-provided containers.
What is the benefit to not using the old thirty gallon containers, since I've got five of them?
This would be, Don, I'm gonna have to let you come and give a description of why you are recommending that this go on. You're gonna do a better job explaining that than I will.
The yard waste bags are much easier means of handling yard waste or handling the leaves, which the program basically was intended to address is fall leaf collection. And we went ahead and implemented a three-week spring program as well. The material that is set out in a container, picking up a bag of leaves and throwing it in and being done with it, as opposed to dealing with trash cans or trash carts, which require us to go carry the container over to the truck, tip the container, try to shake the material out. We've had complaints in the past from people who have said we've damaged their cans in trying to get the material out. If it freezes in the, in the winter, in the fall program, which has happened, they can't get the material out. They try to get it out. They just basically end up, if you're having something heavy and you're trying to shake it, you have a greater chance of doing an injury to the individual. Or, if the can is cold, break it or crack it. If people have lids on the cans, the, the collectors are also expected by the homeowner to put the lid back on or ensure that it doesn't blow out into the street on windy days. The trash carts, this past fall, we had some pretty difficult weather where we, our priority is trash collection, and so we would focus our efforts on get, making sure the day's trash would get collected. And in some cases, the leaves were not collected in a timely manner the day after the garbage collection, and the leaves stayed in the trash cart for two and possibly three workdays after we were supposed to have emptied the carts. And we would get calls, people wanting to say, "I have trash. I have no place to put it. When you're gonna get back and empty my leaves and create space?" The thirty-three gallon carts are problematic with both trash and with leaves, where people can cram them in there, and it takes much more time and effort to get that material out of the thirty-three gallon carts. And so, at the request of my crew, they've asked that, can we get rid of the thirty-three gallon garbage cans? And at the same time, can we not allow the trash carts? Yes, they are physically picking up the item and throwing it in the truck, but it's much more efficient, it's quicker, and we don't have with, have to deal with safely setting the cans or the carts back where we got them. It's a one act, one movement action to get rid of the material. That's why we're asking to disallow the continuance of allowing the thirty-three gallon cans as well as stop using the trash carts.
Thank you, sir. Leon?
I guess I would ask that there be a happier median here. I can see the new trash carts would be problematic, especially the smaller ones. I don't know how you'd empty them. For me, the solution as far as material freezing in the thirty-three, old thirty-three gallon cans, I just put the things in my garage the night before and took it out. That morning, I didn't, didn't see much problem.
You, because you're responsible, but not everybody's that way. Sometimes people let stuff sit out, gets rained in. You know how that works, and I'll tell you what, I've got, I hear where you're coming from, and I'd love to find us a happy medium, but I'm all in on this program with the bags.
It just adds, it just adds to the homeowner's cost to have to buy those bags.
And I know, the, the good thing, the, the positive to this is that it's, it's not super expensive. I think you can get like five bags for two fifty, and I know it's still an expense, but it sure is going to save us in the long run on the, on the stress that it puts on the staff, and, and I, I think it's a good program. I, I wish there was another way we can get around it, but I'm, I'm definitely voting yes on this.
Yeah, I, I just hoping to use up the old garbage cans. Surely get damaged. Then you put them out for the garbage, cut them up and put them in the new carts and be done with them.
Don, I have a question for you real quick. What's the, what's the possibility of just requiring people to have lids on the, the regular carts, on the regular cans? So, much like the trash can that we have today, we won't pick it up if the lid doesn't close. Well, we wouldn't pick up your yard waste unless you have a lid on your thirty-three gallon can, in order to prevent things like moisture from getting in the can and freezing or causing it to be even heavier.
Well, because the lid is on the co, the can when it's set at the curve, doesn't mean the lid was on the can when they first collected the leaves. It also doesn't take care of leaves that are wet. People clean the curb lines, clean their yard, low spots, they put wet leaves in there, which makes the cans even that much heavier. And having a lid on a can full of wet leaves doesn't prevent that can from freezing.
Okay, fair enough.
I, I see both sides. I, I feel bad for Leon. He's got five of these cans sitting around. He needs, needs to use them, and, and I laugh at your slogan, Don, one movement, one action. Sounds like an ad for a laxative, but it's too.
That's my other area of responsibility.
That wasn't me, man. It got nothing to do with that statement.
And, and I, and I, and I took all your points down, all, all six of them, Don, and they are, and they are valid. It's, it's unfortunate that we couldn't grandfather his cans in till they were older, you know, six months or a year, and then we went to the new, and I, and I, all your reasons are, are valid and justified.
Well, I think that the commercial haulers provide a very good yard waste program. I think it's very effective. I can't say that I can recall seeing a, a commercial yard waste program where thirty-three gallon cans are used. They have a dedicated designated cart, wheeled cart, like what we're using for trash. But if they're providing services to that customer, they have one type of cart or one color cart for trash, and they have another cart of a different color that's used for yard waste. Oftentimes, it may be a larger cart than typically you'd find for the trash program. And then they have semi-automated collection or fully automated collection. We're not offering that type of program. We intended to deal with leaves and leaves only. We've allowed people, knowing that people have gardens or that they rake their yards and know you're gonna get, they're gonna get lawn litter along with your leaves to throw them in there. And you have twigs. The city doesn't really have a program for collecting limbs or anything like that. And so, we try to accommodate the customers, but we'd like to restrict the means in which they're getting rid of that material within the confines of this program. Certainly, they can take the material to the landfill themselves at no charge to them. And there's very good commercial hauler programs out there for yard waste. This last fall, the commercial haulers cut off their program at a certain time in the season. We received at least two or three calls from customers of the commercial program who also had wheeled carts for their yard waste and say, "You have the ability to dump wheeled carts. Can you dump our commercial hauler's cart as well because the commercial hauler has cut us off and are not gonna come out? The program is over." So, I mean, the carts work well for a program that's intended to deal with carts.
I, I love the new cart program myself, and aesthetically, it looks, it looks nice. I'd hate to see us go back to just.
We're not trying to compete, we're not trying to compete with the commercial haulers for a yard waste program.
And I didn't consider the land. They could take it, the yard waste to the landfill. I didn't, I hadn't considered that, so.
Yep. Is, I don't know if you know the answer to this. It says the material must be loose or in a paper bag, but what if they were in cans and then emptied? It doesn't really specify at the, at the landfill, sorry.
At the landfill, if you bring out your yard waste in the yard waste bags, you can throw the bag and haul. If you bring it out in plastic bags, or if you were to bring out garbage cans, you have to empty that material out.
But you're still able to haul it.
All the yard waste goes into a pile for composting.
Right.
They have a windrow turner, and they don't want strings, they don't want plastic in the compost pile.
Sounds good. We good?
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
And thank you, Leon. Kathleen, which book?
Rinker?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Comments from the audience? Anyone? Mr. Chean?
When I grow old and frail, I wanna be the Cascade Bridge.
Something else, man.
That thing has nine lives. I wanna talk about that and taxes in general. As I, I, I've said at the budget hearing, and I'll say it again, with the population of this town declining, you've got two, two ways you can go. Either an organized retreat or an agonizing death. So, I got materials here.
Thank you.
Were you born in Burlington?
I was born in Mount Pleasant. My dad was born here and lived in Mount Pleasant. I was born in Mount Pleasant.
And live here.
And live here, on Mount Pleasant Street.
You've come full circle, Leon.
What you have there, the aerial view, is the block that I live on, on Mount Pleasant Street. And the area of concern there is from Gertrude Street to Kern Street. The blacked-out properties are distressed sales, either foreclosure or at auction since the year I showed there, two thousand and three. In other words, because of what's happened in this town with declining wages and increasing taxes, one out of every three houses on the block that I live one out of every three houses on the block that I live on has wound up in a distressed situation. In the current reappraisal, I didn't go through all my neighbors' properties to respect their privacy, but the one house that is for sale, it's listed for ninety thousand dollars. And if you turn the page, you'll find their new assessment is for a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that's typical of what's happened in the same area that I mapped in the aerial view there. In other words, there, the home is assessed for a third more than it's being listed, and there's been no taker so far. What that means already is the taxation has caused substantial damage to my neighborhood and just about every other neighborhood in this town. And then to add a three or five or four percent tax, whatever you're talking about, on the utility bill, to save the Cascade Bridge or replace it, or whatever you wanna do with it, it's too much. When you're under the gun facing the fines that you're facing to fix the sewer system, fixing a bridge that is pretty or replacing the bridge is ridiculous. We don't need that bridge, it was nice when it was built, it was commemorative bridge. But all things were out, there's only sixteen families on the other side of that bridge, and I know some of them, and I've listened to them complain here, that it's such an awful event to have to drive through the park. Well, I live about four miles from the park and drive to go through it because I like seeing what's in the park every now and then, especially this time of year. I don't see how it can be such a burden for the families that live on the other side of the bridge, if they're going shopping at Walmart in West Burlington, to have to drive through the park to get to Madison Avenue to drive eventually to Walmart in West Burlington. I don't see why we should burden homeowners already stressed from excessive taxes with even more taxes. Tear the bridge down, get rid of it, be done with it, put up the barricades you need to, uh, on the arrangement that you have on the south side of the bridge, fix it so people won't try to drive through the barrier, just be done with it. We don't need to replace that bridge, we don't need to repair it, get rid of it, sell it for scrap metal.
Thank you, Mr. Shaney. Anybody else from the audience?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Mike Darnell. I own and live in McConnell Offs, Fourth and Valley Street. And I'm here this evening to talk to you a little bit about, uh, well, I sent a packet to you here about a week ago. I, I have copies, if you'd like a hard copy.
Yes, please.
Well, I don't, I don't want a hard copy. Thank you. Just for recycling reasons.
I do, I'm, I'm old, I like hard copy.
Thanks, Mike.
And don't forget the hot, the media table.
Thank you for reminding me. I'm here on a very, very serious and important issue. I mean, that's a critical issue for me. And the alley between Third and Fourth Street has overhead wires, and God knows how long they've been there, but, uh, I've been working with, uh, well, I guess it'd be your brother, and he, he, he said, the buck stops here. In other words, if, it's gonna get done from the, from the, the point of view of the energy company. We're spending a ton of money bringing, um, power into there, and, uh, I don't see how. Well, just to give you a perspective, this will be the highest-paying residential area. Now, these couple of, three blocks actually, uh, in the city. And the tax revenue that you will eventually receive will be phenomenal. We have, uh, four, four of the residences that are occupied right now sold. And, uh, we're, I, I mean, we, we did everything the city has asked in terms of code issues. And it's been very expensive, and initially, I thought it was, uh, a little bit overboard. But then the fire took place down the street, uh, the Tama building. And, uh, I put in, I don't know how many hours watching, just to see what happens. I saw the overhead wires go, and you have a link there where you can see it, but I'm, I'm pretty sure you probably have seen it. But it, I mean, I'd never seen anything like it. It, it, it made me shiver. There were some fire people caught on the other side of that, but, uh, that could have easily have taken some people out, real easy. And, uh, you know, just a safety reason. And if you look at, for those of you haven't really traveled a lot downtown, boy, most of those wires are underground, thank God. But we happen to have an alley where they're overhead. And that precludes us, from a fire safety standpoint. In other words, if, 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 uh, two of the units that are occupied, all three of them will be, uh, on the fifth floor, if you were to step out of that and there was smoke and there was fire, you, and, and you need a ladder truck to get down, you can't. You know, the ladder truck, you know, it doesn't provide us any safety. And, you know, by the time we get this thing filled out, I, I, I think that's a critical issue, you know? I mean, it, you know, when, when we talk about, uh, you know, life-saving iss, issues in the town, this is a major one. And, uh, you know, I precluded from taking my fire escape off, which really has no value. I precluded from replacing bricks in the wall, I'm precluded from ordering it. And after I spent a ton of money tuckwing every site that I could get to, which was all sides without one, and putting new windows in and that, now I'm being told like, hey, we don't have the money. Now, that's not true. You have the money, and, and you can get the money. The sewer system under, under there is not in good shape. Do you know when the last time it was scoped, Jim? Okay, well, I know for a fact that it has major leakages in it. And I get it in my basement. And how do I know that? Well, when that Tama building went down and there was a ton of excess water, my basement fell. And, uh, so, there's a, you know, sewer, well, like you talked about today, sewer revenue bond. That's a means of financing. When you tear up that alley, gotta replace that, that sewer system in there. Or at least patch it or whatever, whatever you do. But we're talking about things that are, you know, a hundred years old, you know, that has had no, no, real, no maintenance on it. I mean, patch maintenance at the best. And so, it leaves me with sewer problems, storm sewer. And it leaves me with inability to, to address my building. And that, and that's not a good thing for Burlington. We have some of the best assets around in terms of old buildings. And, you know, you can't just say to somebody who's, who's invested a ton of money in his building and it's gonna return a ton of money to the city, that, well, you know, it's not a big deal. Yeah, it is a big deal, you know, because kind of, the kind of, uh, example that you wanna set here is that you, you want people living in consolidated places, not to spread all around. And that's part of our problem, you know, there's streets and sewers and all this stuff that we have to take care of all around, and our population isn't that big. I mean, I was city budget director at one time, there were thirty-two thousand people. And I don't know where we are today, twenty-five or something like that. And the city's, has spread out a lot more. So, you want, you want your city to be concentrated, that way it costs this, uh, the city a lot less money to maintain its infrastructure. So, what I'm asking for isn't ridiculous, it's, 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 it's the future. And, uh, you know, I, I would be glad to go, and be more than happy to have any of yous down there, or all of yous down there, to where I could show you the damage in the basement. I could show you the, what, what that east wall looks like. And, you know, I, I, I just, I just know if you, if you saw it visually and you knew the burden that takes us to, to renovate an old building and give it another hundred-plus years, and, and we're doing it, but we can't access that back part, and that's really where the issue is. Is there any way that, you know, you'd be willing to come down because it is, it's a huge issue?
Uh, I wouldn't have any problem coming down and checking it out.
I'd, I'd, I'd really appreciate.
I wouldn't either, I'd, I'd like to see it as well.
Thank you. I mean, I, I really feel it's, uh, it's an eye-opener.
Stick around, after we get done, let's, uh, and we can, we can get all that work done, set up a timer or whatever.
Sure, sure.
And hear you out. And, uh, don't think that we don't appreciate all the work you've done, I know you've been working on that building, so.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I'd love to show you, you know, exactly what's being done because it's, uh, I mean, I've seen, I've seen some developing shit, stuff here in Burlington, it's, uh, really, really shocked me. And I think shocked me from a point of view that it, you know, it's not, it's not there to last. But I'll guarantee you, what I'm doing, you're gonna be, you're gonna see, you're gonna see that building easily like that in a hundred years.
Set it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And Mike, um, you know, I, as I had emailed back to you and to the council, this is a topic that they just talked about a couple of months ago, so. So, in terms of putting it back on the agenda, it's gonna be up to them to ask that it be done.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted, Jim.
Yes, um, there's a, the two hundred thousand or so that it would cost for the out, to do the alley improvements can be covered. You, essentially, you do it as a GO bond and probably reduce what you did for borrowing for street improvements for that year. The bigger issue and concern that Alliant raised in that is where do you put the transformers? Uh, they don't have a location on that alley, and I, that, there's, I think the, there's another half alley anyway that they didn't have a location either, uh, to, to be able to put them, except into the parking. And they, they were not really enthused with it. They can make it work if, if that's a route that you wanted to go, and they were willing to do it. But again, it's, it's not just getting the alleys paved, if that is the route that you wanna go.
But it's not even just the alleys. As Mr. Darnell has pointed out, there's other infrastructure, I'm sure Nick would have concur, but there's other infrastructure in that, those spaces that would probably need to be addressed if we were to tear the streets up, right?
Well, let's, uh, yeah, I don't wanna.
Conversation.
I don't wanna go in, yeah, let's not go into conversation about this now, but we can definitely, those that wanna ask, uh, Mr. Donald questions afterwards, can definitely get set up.
Jim, can I, can I reply to what Jim said?
Sorry.
I, I'd just like to reply to what Jim said.
Okay.
Uh, the overhead, if you walk downtown, look down the alleys, you know, they still, they're underground, but they still have a lot of the overheads, uh, down here at, um, Burlington, they do. We have them, and I don't know why they would have to go underground, just the transformers. And you, you'll see, you get a vision.
You would have to talk with Alliant about that, 'cause they've told us that there is no location in that alley that they can go, except the end.
They told me that too, Jim, and then they, and then they backed off and, 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 no, 'cause they told me I was gonna have to put it over there, the F and M parking lot, run, run the cable, pay for the cable all the way down there. They came out and, and, um, I said, well, have you ever test, tested the amount of power that's going in the transformer? That's just right up there from us. And, uh, they did it, said, you're, you're, you're good. So, you know, that's, that's, that's an issue that I think we could work out. But yeah, you're right, there was a hitch there for a while.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Terry?
Terry Ariano, twenty-eight hundred South Main Street. I didn't have anything to say until I heard other comments tonight. And concerning what Mr. Darnell was mentioning about the alley, I do know that, that alley affects other, um, public buildings for the city, including the Capitol Theater, um, the Art Center building ends over there. Stylteek, who's invested a lot in, you know, refurbishing their building, that's also on that alley. So, it's not just for him that he's speaking about it, it has to do with the infrastructure, you know, of the city. So, I just wanted to voice that, um, having been involved with the Capitol Theater. The second thing I, I didn't like what I heard tonight was a comment that the Cascade Bridge only benefited fourteen families. And I think that is, um, rather narrow-sided. I live there, I'm one of those fourteen that is being, um, included in that group. And I can say that Main Street goes a lot further than, um, just where this lost neighborhood is, just on the south side of Cascade Bridge. It continues through to the rest of the park. When I came here tonight, I had to go five miles per hour because there's softball games by going through Dankworth Park. And there's probably over a hundred cars and two hundred kids, and so that's not really a thoroughfare, that's safe to travel. When I go the other way, there's parties, there's weddings, and there's other events that are happening as well. So, it's, it's also more for the community. And I don't want it to get bogged down for anyone to think it's just for these people that have had their property taxes continually increased over the period of time since the bridge has been closed, along with our property value being assessed higher, but yet we don't have the benefit of that bridge. So, there's, there's two sides to that. But more importantly, and I mentioned this last time, when the story broke that there was gonna be a tax, everybody is worried about that. Everybody's being taxed, they're not getting refunds, there was somebody else that brought that up tonight. The, we all got pink slips in our water bill telling us that the water's going up, the sewer's going up. We already know Alliant is increasing their money, um, their charges, I should say. So, my concern and my interest is getting more support for this council from the public, from people like Lisa Walsh, who was here, that's involved in organizations like the Great River Road, or with historic organizations, with, um, Steve Freevert that was here. I've talked to the Art Commission, uh, possibly doing art on it that, uh, will cover some of the cost of a hand railing. Or maybe there's ways to use money for, um, lighting that could come with a partnership with Alliant Energy that's a renewal, renewable resource. I just feel like there's more ways to look at this, and I, and I hope that I'm not insulting anybody that you haven't thought of this already. I just wanna be able to open it up to greater options and possibly proposing that there is a new committee that is, um, created to support the council, that can really look at some of these and take some of the heat of it and think about for the whole community, rather than just listening to a couple of sourpusses or people on Facebook saying they don't wanna be taxed 'cause they don't use the bridge. I think it's more important than that, it's, it's part of the whole foundation of the city and the historic aspect. And lastly, I'm gonna bring up Aldo Leopold, because that's really where that whole park began. It's an arboretum, and we wanna keep it like that. It's not a, um, a place that needs to have detour signs going around it, it's part of the richness of our city. So, I'm, I'm just throwing out there that I would like to propose any way that there are people that are intelligent people, that are in business, that have knowledge of financing and other ways to get money, that I do believe want to come together and create this committee and help support the council.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Terry. Okay, if there's nothing else, close your marks. I gotta body real quick. Mr. Tisland.
Just a reminder of the historic preservation. Again, that Steve mentioned, presentation at the library Wednesday, May fifteenth at six-thirty, going over the historic preservation guidelines and all of the historic preservation commission. And then the Great River Bridge Race is a week from Saturday, on the Saturday, May eighteenth. The funds proceeds from the race go towards supporting the park project. This year, it's the Dankworth Hot Spot Playground across from the Dankworth Park Pool. That playground was built in nineteen eighty-six, small wooden structure in dire need of replacement. So, proceeds from that race will go towards making some improvements there. Some, couple concepts here, but hoping to have a good turnout, hoping that the river continues to go down. Follow us on Facebook for updates on if there are any changes needed to the race, so. But registration continues, register by this Friday to guarantee a tee shirt. Prices does, do go up after May tenth. So, does have the ten K race, the five K race, and those that aren't runners and just wanna walk across the bridge, the bridge walk as well with a twenty dollar fee for that. And that starts at eleven. So, encourage people to come down, have the race party as well, hopefully at the port. So, come down, support the runners and support the parks.
All right, thank you. Did you have anything?
Terry Ariano, twenty-eight hundred South Main Street. I don't know if this is the right place to ask this. I am the president of the Southeast Diveout Property Owners Organization. And we are curious what the Healthy Neighborhood Program, Grant Program is going to be this year because we can get our landlords and of course, our residents involved. Is there any update on that?
I had a message from you. Working on kinda updating that with Charlie leaving. Should have some information hopefully to you this week on that.
Okay, we meet twice a month. And it's the second Tuesday. So, we'll be meeting again one week from tomorrow. So, if we had it by then, I could, I could share that.
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
Just give you kind of an update of the situation with flooding. We are on the decline. I think it's twenty-one eight last time I looked.
Do you have to be so negative saying we're on the decline?
That's actually a good thing, though, isn't it? Should I say it with a smile? I, I think the biggest thing that we're concerned about is rain over the next four days. Wednesday, I think, being the strongest chance for some, pretty significant rain. So, Division and Main, that intersection is partially open in the sense that you can turn on Division Street. However, we do not, with the forecast in, 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 in front of us of what we could get for rain, we're not taking the Hescos down on Main Street until we know kinda where we sit. If we return to twenty-four foot, those will have to be back in place. So, we will be leaving basically everything that we have up for, for the time being. Most of what we did last week staff-wise was flooding. So, Central and Division didn't get touched. I don't think it'll get touched again this week. So, it looks like it's probably a more of a next week type conversation. So, that's all I really had. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Good.
Thank you.
I will just say, you guys did an amazing job. So, I appreciate it. Great job.
Anything else?
Radio. I think you had that worked out, but.
Anything else, James? Okay, you guys have been fantastic tonight. Even you, Leon, even you. Can I get a motion?
Push the close.
Second.
Move to second. Kathleen.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
McCamber.
Yes, please. Thank you all for your participation. This means a jerk.
That's all, folks.